Everybody, tonight is Tuesday, April 6, 2021. 6:30 PM. We. I'm hearing too many voices, sorry. We're going to open in public session and then we have an executive session, so we'll start by doing a roll call, please.
Jack Creighton here.
Corey Evans here.
Diane Kennedy here.
Paul Schubert here.
Carrie Thompson here.
Okay. We are going to go into executive session under exception number six to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. Tonight, the board's going to discuss Crocker Lane, which we've previously discussed, and under topics not reasonably anticipated, we are also going to be discussing a property known as the Rice Lot, which we need to take relative immediate action on, so I will ask for a motion to go into executive session.
Still moved.
Is there a second? Okay, roll call, please.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Okay, and we'll return to the public meeting as soon as we are completed around 7 o'clock PM. And I think Justine will be sending us a link for executive. Okay, good evening, everybody. Tonight's meeting will be conducted on the Zoom platform, obviously, and livestreamed on Cohasset 143 TV and on Cohasset's Facebook page. The public is also invited to join us as attendees on the Zoom platform, which can be accessed using the link provided at the top of the posted agenda for tonight's meeting. Members of the board and other scheduled participants will be able to participate when called on by the chair. Board members will be able to ask questions of any participant, and all votes taken tonight's meeting will be by roll call. We're going to try a little bit different if there are members of the public that want to speak on an item that is on the agenda. We're going to ask that you type your name and address into the Q and A, and we will promote people to speak for up to two minutes. We are trying to have that Q and A be just an acknowledgement, like a raising of the hand for the public participants, to let us know that you would like to be recognized and brought in to speak, because and have it be less of a chat room, so I appreciate everybody's patience with that. And then for a public comment, which is at the top of our agenda tonight, it looks like there's one person, and we'll just read that question and then move on to the agenda. So again, if you are interested in speaking on a topic on the agenda this evening, please just type your name and address in, and we will get to you after the selectmen have, or select board members have had their opportunity to discuss. We're also going to be joined later by the advisory committee for a joint meeting, and we have a big night ahead, so Carrie, if you want to just read the public comment.
Yep, we have one comment from Sean Galvin at 143 Fort Hill Street in Hingham, saying, "Will the senior send-off of 2021, originally posted for tonight but removed this evening, be taken up next week or later this month?"
Good, and I will respond to that because I meant to address that. We did amend the agenda, and the proposal for a senior class send-off will be taken up at a future date. There were some public safety meetings that still needed to take place in terms of giving that event a little more shape. So as soon as that's ready, we will likely have it on a future agenda. Okay, so with that, I think next on our agenda is an acceptance of gift from the Cohasset Conservation Trust, and I believe we have, I'm just trying to see who's here.
From.
I just moved Katie Holden up.
Oh, okay, that's why she's not in the attendee list, so Katie's here. Hi, Katie, thanks for being here.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, yes.
Thank you.
Welcome, if you wouldn't mind just introducing yourself, your address, and then telling us about your proposal.
I'm Katie Holden at 29 Norfolk Road Cohasset, and I am a director on the Cohasset Conservation Trust. And the Cohasset Conservation Trust holds a conservation restriction over Barnes Wildlife Sanctuary, which is next to Wheelwright Park. And and the Barnes is owned by the town. And so I am here on behalf of CCT and the Sylvia family to request a memorial bench for which Sylvia, who thanks to his tireless efforts and people skills, ensured the protection of this wonderful land, and so he passed away last year, and it seemed like this would be a fitting way to commemorate that. So.
Great. Can somebody, does Tracy or Justine, anybody have Katie's photographs that we could share? So the proposal, and just because it's putting, placing something on a, on town property, we have to accept it as a gift. It's a beautiful, simple bench, past my aesthetic muster in a very big way, and with a, with a small plaque in honor of Sylvia for his dedication to, to the open space there. So we're going to try to pull up a picture. Hang on.
There is not currently a bench in Barnes Wildlife yet, so there's others in Wheelwright Park, but this would be the first one in Barnes.
Okay. It's coming, so this is the plaque. Just eight inches by three and a half, and then if you want to, is the picture, is the photograph on the same? Scroll. I think the bench is really, I just love its simplicity, and it looks like it'll just fit naturally, and is a good, in my mind, a good model for our future discussions about benches.
It's a very, yeah, it's a very simple, it's going to be the same as a bench that was installed last year on the Boot Preserve, which is nearby the new CCT property. There we go.
There we go, thanks Tracy. So, looks great. Any questions from the board? Good work, and Katie got in touch with me in January, so I appreciate your patience.
Diane, I knew Rich pretty well, and I've known him from one of the first people I met when I moved to town in 81. I think this is wonderful, and I think the family's a wonderful family. And you know, Rich has done so much, he was on the school committee, he did everything in this town, and it will be such a special, special thing to celebrate him, and what a great spot, I can see him smiling down. And he is smiling down at us, thanks, good idea.
Absolutely, thanks, Jack, and Katie, do I have it right that it was his granddaughter who built the bench?
Yes, his daughter, his daughter, will be, will be making it, and along with some scouts, and yeah. So it, and they, the family has raised all the funds for it, and so we're ready, we're ready to go.
Well, what Jack said, I certainly applaud this effort and everything Rich did for the community, and what a nice way to memorialize that. Any other questions, otherwise I'll ask for a motion to accept the gift.
I'd like to move that we accept the gift honoring Rich Sylvia.
Okay, roll call, please.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Okay, there you have it, Katie, thank you so much for your work.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Take care.
Have a good evening.
Carrie.
Yes.
You and Chris have the floor to walk us through some of the planning for June diversity.
And Chris, can you actually promote Ashley, she's here as well? So this is a fun thing we get to talk about, which we're really looking forward to, and my colleague from the school committee, Ashley Cleary, is also here to join us. Just to tee us up on this conversation, as you know, last year, the select board set one of our goals as being community health, and encompassing community health is the issue, obviously, of diversity and inclusion, and making our community more healthy and accepting for everyone. And a lot of residents have shown a lot of interest in this issue, I've been really inspired by it. I know Ashley's been really inspired by it. Our diversity committee has been really inspired by it, and we were thinking and have been thinking for several months about several events that we can do in June, celebrating both Pride Month and Juneteenth and Loving Day. And I'm going to let Ashley explain a little bit too about how the school committee has had interest in this, based on some of the climate surveys at the schools, because we have had a lot of interest from our students, and we're really excited too that there's a lot of student interest happening with these as well. So she's going to run through that a little bit, and then we're going to talk through a few of the event ideas that we are in the stages of planning in hopes that we can get some more people interested in helping us. Hi, Ashley.
Hello, thanks for having me. So the schools have distributed a survey to both middle school students and high school students twice over the last four years, I think, or every other year, and the last one was the year that COVID derailed spring. So anyway, so they, they survey the students and ask lots of questions about how their school experience is going and how they feel in our schools, and they ask a little bit of demographic information, and so that allows, it's a, it's a tool that is designed to analyze the culture and climate of the schools from a student perspective. And so what the data has shown over these last two surveys is that we have some work to do in our schools to make everyone feel included and respected. So particularly students of color and our LGBTQ population in our schools feel like there's a lot of room for improvement in their experiences in the schools. The school leadership team is phenomenal. They are embracing the opportunity to amplify student voice and include student voice in a lot of the decisions that are being made as far as the direction of the culture in the schools. I'm really, really thrilled to be able to say that enthusiastically, our leadership team is really excellent. So we're very fortunate to have that. So this data was presented at a school committee meeting, and the leadership team acknowledges that there's some work to do. And when Carrie and Chris and I had a conversation about these events in June, I brought some of the ideas back to our school community, and people are excited to celebrate these different events this summer in Cohasset.
Yes, and we have a lot of student interest too, which is really exciting. So a few of the events, and Ashley, you can help me talk about this, is Pride Month, obviously, is the entire month, and we're planning on a few different events for that. One great thing that we have that's going to incorporate both Pride Month and then our Loving Day in Juneteenth is our connection with the Art Center. And we've had meetings with Patrice, the director, about how we can incorporate some possible uses of their space and art, and the idea of art to bring more knowledge about, especially what Juneteenth and Loving Day are, because they're fairly new topics and holidays for our community, for Massachusetts in general, for our country in general. So Juneteenth actually falls on the same weekend as the Arts Festival this year, and typically, I think that's going to be something that happens every year, which is going to be great. And because of that, we were thinking that we could do some, probably some type of picnic on Juneteenth involving local artists, involving student artists, involving some artists of color to come in and, you know, be able to display different types of art, and not just visual art, but maybe some poetry, maybe a little bit of theater, maybe some other events that our students are, you know, planning and working on right now. We have the students brainstorming. We've also thought of Loving Day, which I don't know if anyone has seen the Loving movie, but that falls a week before Juneteenth, and we're thinking about doing a movie. We originally thought a drive-in, but now it seems like it might be safe just to do one outside, possibly on the field. The high school students thought that it might be fun to do a kind of a movie viewing of Loving on Loving Day the weekend before, possibly on one of our fields, with maybe some student speakers speaking beforehand, so, and then maybe bringing some food trucks in. I know Safe Harbor had a really successful experience last year doing a movie night, a drive-in movie night. So those are two ideas with that. We have the library really excited to get involved and really figuring out how to bring kind of a yearly celebration of these events and diversity in general in June that hopefully will begin this year and continue every year from then on. Ashley, am I forgetting anything about these events that are in progress?
I don't think so. The, there are some community members that have been sort of involved from the beginning, but right now, we, we wanted to make sure we were talking to the students in the schools to make sure that we created a space for student voice as, as these events were sort of taking shape. And we feel like we've done that and are now in a place where asking for any members of the community who'd like to be involved in planning feels appropriate, and we would welcome that. And again, this is something that we hope to make a regular occurrence in Cohasset.
Yeah, so are there any questions from our fellow board members here about any of this stuff? Any, any ideas, any brainstorms?
I see Jack and then Corey.
I'm just trying to understand who we is. You're talking about we need to do this. Who is we, is this an official town fair, official town function? Or is this a group that, I'm familiar with the diversity committee, a lot of people in my church are, are very active in that, and I go to a number of the functions. But I'm trying to figure out who the we is, and are all voices in the community being represented? Or are some voices being represented? So if you could clarify that, that would be helpful.
Sure, so what, what has happened up to now is that Carrie and I and Chris had a conversation initially to discuss what the possibilities might be. When we discussed having the schools play a part, I brought it to the leadership team at the schools, who are excited about it, and encouraged us to. I made it very clear that I thought amplifying student voices, given the data from the climate survey, would be appropriate, and so we began talking to students. They're excited, and now we're asking for members of the community. So by we, I mean the people thus far have been Carrie and I, Cohasset High School students, and the school leadership, and we're asking for members of the community who are interested to let us know they would like to take part in planning these.
And we definitely want opinions of everyone. I mean, I, for me, the initial conversation stemmed from a lot of conversations coming from people in town, arguing that they felt like that we need to do something like this, right? There's been a lot of conversations of people really excited about the potential of these types of events, but also I've heard from a lot of residents, especially residents of color and residents who identify as LGBTQ, who feel that they don't always belong here and don't necessarily feel like they're part of our community. So when I say we, you know, I don't, I'm not speaking for anyone individually, but I think that we as a town want to, should make this a goal in terms of working on being inclusive and embracing the diversity that I think that we have here that isn't often celebrated. And these events are a chance, I think, to celebrate these types of things that I think a lot of residents and people in town are really interested in, especially coming from the energy of our students and our young people.
Thanks, I'll let, I'll let Corey's.
That question was not answered, but anyway, go ahead.
It wasn't answered.
I think we should be, everyone in Cohasset should be talking about these things, Jack, and giving their opinions and providing their opinions, and we need to be listening to each other on these issues. So you're, I mean, I would love for you to come to one of our future meetings if you want to weigh in.
Corey?
Yeah, I just, the ability to connect your efforts and, and you know, the arts fair, I mean, culture is art and is reflected in it, and it's just, you know, I just see a really kind of great way to bring, to amplify voices in a productive celebratory way, and I just, I, that just strikes me as, just, it's almost too convenient to believe. I just, it's fantastic. You know, I think as a community like ours, which is isolated from the world in a lot of different ways, we have to make an active, we have to play an active role in this. We can't expect, you know, to, that, you know, the community will just, you know, embrace this stuff. We have to really, I don't want to say push it, but we have to actively embrace it because the world is bigger than Cohasset, and the more we can bring those voices, it benefits all of us. It benefits our children, it benefits all of our lives if we can see beyond our beautiful little area. There's a lot more to it, and you know, bringing all those voices, I think is just, is, there's no downside, you know. So my full support, and if there's stuff that I can assist with, please let me know.
Thank you, Corey. Paul, and then I'll wrap us up.
I mean, I think it's terrific, I mean, as, you know, an old Yankee, you know, Juneteenth was when the federal Union troops went to Galveston and said, you know what?
Yep.
You may not have heard about this, but there's been emancipation, and you all lost the war, and everyone's at this point freed, so you know, I, you know, this is, I learned this in high school. I'm not sure if they teach it around the various states in the Union, but they taught it in Massachusetts when I was a kid. I think this is great, and it gives a, you know, a higher profile for trying to keep people talking to one another, being polite, being engaged, being part of the community. I think it's great.
And I will say, just to add to this, we've, we've spoken with Safe Harbor about it too, and Jack, I know this is an issue near and dear to your heart and all of our hearts, but one of the reasons why I think we see a lot of young people especially struggling with different substance abuse disorders and, you know, substance abuse issues is because they don't feel like they're part of the community, and they feel like they're different, and they feel like that diversity and difference isn't embraced or loved or welcomed here. And I think that that's also a really important aspect of this is, is making especially our young people feel like they are part of this community.
Jack, do you have another comment?
Yeah. Yeah, my concern is not with being inclusive. Those people who know my history is, I probably, I lived in the city for a while, was very active in the city. I was a popularly elected of a neighborhood association for close to 15 years. It was one of the most, I've been blanked off here on the screen, unfortunately. It was a very diverse neighborhood before it was fashionable. I think my concern is that we're hearing, I don't know what's happened to my screen, I've been blacked off.
We can still see and hear you.
Oh, okay, that's good. So my concern really is in diversity and inclusion that we do have in this country of evolving cancel culture. And I think a lot of the people who are more conservative in their values and traditional are being very seriously marginalized. And they're marginalized to the point where parents will privately tell you that they will not open their mouths because they know that the impact will be on their children. And there are many children who will know that, and they will never say anything because of the cancel culture. So if we're going to have an inclusion, which I'm all in favor of, I mean, people may not know, my father was born in China. My grandfather ran the first woman's secondary school for Chinese women, one very unfashionable. My grandmother's family disowned her when she married my grandfather. We have in the Creighton family a long tradition of inclusion and, and embracing everybody. But I guess my point is, my concern is maybe many of the forces that talk so loudly about diversity are not understanding of diversity of viewpoints that don't agree with them. So if you're going to do this, which I think the town should, I think the leaders of the people who are politically fairly to the left should make this truly a diversity thing, and they who call for diversity should make an effort to have some of more conservative, if you will, that's kind of like, doesn't capture it all, but more of a broad basis of all of this, because if this is going to be a town event, it should represent all the viewpoints in town. So I just ask that you remember that, and that I asked you to remember your words about diversity and inclusion, and apply it to everybody, including those people that you may disagree with. Thank you.
I want to be, Carrie, if you want to answer that, but I do want to try to be mindful of the time because we have a joint meeting with advisory, but Carrie, I'll give you that, and then I want to wrap up.
Jack, it's critical that people listen to viewpoints that they disagree with, and that's something that's critical of all of us, that I think all of us need to do better. But these events that we're planning, I, I don't consider them to be partisan or political at all. I mean, I don't see why anyone would have a problem with celebrating these two types of holidays specifically in June, because this is when these holidays happen in June, and the celebrations.
Didn't say that, did not say that.
No, I'm saying that what you're saying, I think, should be happening, that should be something year round.
You're leading this, I'm just asking you to be truly inclusive. That's all.
Well, Jack, I'm excited to send you invitations to our future discussions because I would love to hear your opinions on them.
I think you should reach out to other, other voices, not just, you know.
So Jack, just, just a reminder that this, this was an invitation. And so Carrie's email and my email are on the town website, my school committee email, and Carrie's select board email, and anyone who's interested in participating, we would love to hear from them by email.
Exactly, and this is why we were excited to talk about this tonight, because we want more opinions, and we want more help, and we want more voices. So the point of kind of spearheading this announcement tonight was hopefully to get more people in town involved and wanting to help and offer their insights.
In the same, I agree, and in the same manner in which I've been very much aware, when it wasn't fashionable to be, to be gay, I had one of the early gay leaders in my neighborhood association, and I selected a very good friend of mine. Most of my friends were of all the, so, in there. But what I'm trying to let you understand, if you really care about people being marginalized, I'm pointing out something that is true, which is different value structures in the parents, and the kids in the schools are afraid to speak because of a prevailing culture. And I'm saying that you who are speaking so eloquently about the need to do this and include everybody, I'm just taking you at your words, let's work out, and let's have a truly open conversation with all people, because now they don't say anything because they're afraid, and they, and that's, that's a real shame. That's a real cancer on our democracy. That's all I'm trying to point out.
Thank you, Jack, I'm going to, I'm going to wrap this up, and Carrie and Ashley, thank you so much. I think what we're talking about is really celebrating humanity and celebrating people, and in involving people, this is not political, this is, this is a human celebration. I find it joyful. Corey stole my, my, what I really wanted to say, which is I'm so thrilled that you found a relationship with the Art Center to do this. As somebody that has professionally worked in the arts for 35 years, it brings me great joy, and that is really ground zero for people being able to celebrate their differences and, and those things that make us human that we have in common. So I'm thrilled for this initiative, I'm happy to help if you need any performers. I got a whole bunch of them in my Rolodex, so to speak, so thank you. And we did also hear from the Art Center just a few days ago, putting in some applications for events for their own marking of their annual arts festival. Obviously, it'll be very different, but there are some events that they want to get scheduled, and I think that's probably the next time we'll hear from this effort, just in terms of, you know, approving an event and whatever needs to go, the infrastructure around that within, obviously, the limitations that we do have because of COVID. So stay tuned, keep in touch, thank you for your good work.
Thank you for having me. Have a good night.
Great, thank you. Next up, we have. Next up, we have Guillaume Severdins, who's here representing the Red Lion Inn. They are, we had discussed with them a few months ago, when we renewed their licenses, their interest in having some, some extended hours on specific days through the year so that they can market and sell those. So we got in our packet, a request for a number of extended days. Guillaume, thank you for joining us.
Hi, thanks for having me.
Just for the people at home and just because I don't have it right in front of me, would you just walk through the, I think it's four different days that you're asking for extended hours in one of the rooms in your facility?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. So we're looking at booked events that we're actually trying to finalize some of the different contracts. And we have four requests for extensions. As we see here on the screen, we have the first one and the second one would be for Labor Day and Halloween night. Both events would take place in the cave, which is in the basement of the Red Lion. Right now, the, the cave is permitted Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And we have some requests for this two specific long weekends, I want to say, for an event for those nights on Sunday nights, which would happen in the cave. I don't know if you're familiar with the, the layout. It's underneath the tavern. The third one would be, this is actually a little complication as of COVID and cancellation of one event from last year that we had to move to this year. And unfortunately those guests do not have the ability to have all the rooms at the inn. And so they had to move their party to the Nantasket Resort in, in Hall. And so the big challenge on this one would be just a literally one hour timeline for them to be able to check in as the 4:00 PM check in and then be able to come here and do the ceremony. The original plan was to do the ceremony at five. And because of the late check in, the 4:00 PM check in in Nantasket, they would have to, they were requesting an extension of one hour in order to be able to make it in time and have the ceremony onsite at the Red Lion. So the five hour event would actually just be delayed one hour. And as, as currently on Sundays, the, the barn is permitted until 10:00 PM. So requesting to see if it's possible to extend until 11:00. And then lastly, the last event would be for the barn as well as New Year's Eve permitted until 11:00 PM on Fridays. And the guests are requesting to see if we can actually do a proper countdown for New Year's Eve until midnight and then close the bar, fully close the, the event at 1:00 AM, meaning that the, the actual bar would close at 12:30 as usual.
Okay. Great. Any specific questions from members? Cory?
I've just, is this what we've done in the past? I, I've never been to a New Year's party really anywhere. So is this something you've done in the past?
So I, I know like the restrictions on the, on the license are pretty specific. And I know I've been here a little over two and a half years. And I, I remember in 2019, just being freshly new to Cohasset, we actually had one similar occasion and nobody even thought of extending the license or whatnot. And it was literally done, I want to say 10 days prior. And we had a, an emergency request with the town and you were very gracious to grant it on the last minute as it was like, we, nobody even thought there was even a, a question. But yeah, so we appreciate that.
I think a few times we've just done a blanket extension for New Year's Eve for the various entities that were hosting parties that evening. You know, we've done it kind of on an ad hoc basis. And I think given when we reviewed the full request of hours, you know, we projected that this might be a better way to approach instead of giving full hours, seven days a week, all the different rooms in the, in the facility. So I appreciate this, the advanced information as well. So.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I was trying to gather the whole year calendar year and see exactly what we have going on and what would be the potential, give plenty of notice and see what could be done as far as I guessed and try to accommodate where we can, until we can resolve some of the, the conditions in the future.
Great, thank you, Jack.
Yeah, thanks for, for coming forward. I, I have no problem with these exceptions to the overall rule. But I think we, we should make it clear that the town does not want the Red Lion Inn to be substant, substantially exceed the original reasons that they agreed to in order to allow the original expansion. So I think those remain sacrosanct. However, I appreciate you coming back on some noted Holloway, you know, Halloween, New Years. But I, I think, you know, and I'd be willing to actually make the motion to approve these because I think it's reasonable. And I thank you for coming forward. And we do want to work with the Red Lion Inn, but I do want to make sure at least that we, probably the sentiment of the community is not to have this, you know, like an exception every two weeks. But on these holidays, I think it's a great idea and I'm looking forward to a great Halloween party. That is, if I'm invited.
Second, well, yeah, no, go ahead.
So there, there is a.
I think I made the motion.
Second.
Second, okay. There, there is a question from a member of the audience. I had said at the early, earlier that I would promote people, but it's a pretty direct question, which is just in terms of whether this required notification of a butters for license modifications. My understanding is that this isn't a modification on the license, but a kind of a ad hoc event extension on one time basis, times for specific dates. We've done this in the past. So in this case, notification is not required, but, but the question is, is valid. So. Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Any other discussion among the select board members? Paul?
Yeah, so the, you know, the one that, that comes up is going to be the one in December. It's December 5th, which is a Sunday night. You know, that's a, basically that's a school night. It's still relatively active. The other ones seem to be occurring on a, either a Friday night or a, a long weekend, Sunday night. But that, you know, that December 5th, just be very, you know, aware of the, you know, the noise at, at that hour to try to.
Absolutely. And so.
Recommend to the, you know, as the patrons come in, just to remind them saying, you know, this is a relatively unusual extension that we don't normally do for, you know, for this unusual circumstance. That's all.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second, unless there's any other comments from the board. I will ask for a roll call, please.
Jack Creighton, I. Ray Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Great, thank you, Guillaume.
Thank you.
Have a good night. You know, I just, just think it's important to say that every week we're, we're doing the best we can to try to balance our, you know, activity level and getting businesses back in order and keeping our residents happy in their homes because we're all, you know, we're all spent and we appreciate it. And I think the more we can work together to both, you know, keep lines of communication open between neighbors and businesses and other entities, all the better for it. So thank you. We now have a joint meeting with advisory committee. We're going to be reviewing two of bigger articles for a town meeting. One is the Article 14th Community Preservation Committee and Article 19th Capital Improvement Budget. We have, I believe Sam Wakeman here from Capital Budget and Russ Panetti representing CPC. And then I'm going to turn it over for a minute, for a few minutes to Rob Hillman, Chair of the Advisory Committee, to call his meeting to order.
Thanks Diane. Just give me a second. All right, so we're on for having a joint meeting with the. With the Board of Selectmen for the purposes of CPC and CDC. Review. I am desperately looking for my copy of the agenda with the, with the magic incantation in it, which I can't find, so I'm just going to wing it. So pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 30, and the section that is contained in our written and duly posted agenda, the advisory committee will open and conduct this meeting using remote technology. It will be recorded. All votes will be by roll call. So I will move to open our meeting and note that we have separately posted a meeting to occur after this. Last year, we had a joint meeting at Willacott Commons and the advisory committee walked down the hallway, we're going to do so virtually, and reconvene in, in another meeting to continue our business this evening. So in, I'll call the roll to open our meeting. Gina Stino.
Present.
Fran Collins. You're muted Fran.
Present.
Excellent. Jean, Jean Healy.
Present.
Lee, Lee Jenkins.
Present.
Helene Leeb. I should note for the record that Helene anticipates joining us about 15 minutes later due to prior commitments. Mary McGoldrick.
Present.
And Rob Hillman. And I'm present, so.
I'm here too.
Oh, I'm sorry, Meg.
Sorry. Happens when you're at the end of the alphabet.
It, it does. I hate to pile on with, but there you go. So the, the advisory committee meeting is, is open Diane, since we're your, your guests, I'll defer to you. And as we go through it, give the advisory committee the opportunity to ask questions as, as is appropriate.
Great, thanks, Rob. Chris, and I don't know if Russ wants to turn his video on. Russ, we can see you, or we can't see you, but it looks like you're with us. Chrissy, do you want to tee this up and then when we get Russ?
Yes, so, so we have the, the joint session tonight is for, do you have the recommendations of the Committee Preservation Committee first? And Russ is off this, oh, there he goes, his, his microphone's off. So Russ will go first and then the recommendations as they are so far. And then Capital will present their long list and we can put stuff on the screen as we can. And then the advisors break off and do their deliberations and you folks can do the same. And I believe Russ can speak now, so. Are you there Russ?
Can we put this up on the screen too, for everyone? Please. Okay, so it's, yeah, we can see that fine. And then Russ, we can probably hear you if you speak, but we can't see you.
I believe Russ was playing with it. It just got himself a brand new camera and speaker. It seems like he may be having some trouble.
Let's give him a minute and then if not, Paul, maybe you could.
Yeah, I could jump in if need be.
I want to be mindful of, of advisory having another meeting after this. So maybe Paul, if you want to start, at least kind of tick off the, the, the ones that maybe require less conversation.
Yeah, so let me go with the, start from the top to the bottom. The, the first one is Historical Preservation. It's Paul Prep Memorial Library. That is a map and there are some other minor rebinding of books at the Paul Prep Memorial Library that was voted unanimously for $3,000 from the Historical Preservation portion of the CPC funding. The next one, which is $375,000, is the Cohasset High School Track. So this is the outer portion of the current turf field, which was, I believe this was redone in 2008 or 2009. The outer track portion has been redone in 2008 or 2009. It has begun to buckle and there's been large areas of both water and that has undermined the structural integrity of the track itself. So there are certain lanes that are not usable, which makes it difficult for track meets. So the plan would be to resurface it with a newer. A material that would last a little bit longer and would fill in the areas that are, they're basically, there's some, some divots and there's some rises and buckling of the, of the, of the track itself. It does not include the turf field itself and it does not include the, I think the shot put area in the far end of the field.
And, and just, I just want to add, and Sam Wakeman, correct me if I'm wrong, because Chris is on with Russ, trying to get him back into this meeting. But I believe that we are going to be hearing through Capital Budget, some additional funding for, for the field at the high school that this track is, surrounds. So hold that thought.
That is correct, yeah, from additional monies, but not from CPC, correct. Any questions on that?
Everybody good for that? Okay.
So the, the next is the Community Housing Affordable Housing Trust, the $500,000. The original request was for $400,000 from the Affordable Housing Trust. This is money coming from Community Housing Monies and Affordable Housing portion of the CPC monies. This would go through the town meeting to the Affordable Housing Trust, which would use this for potential affordable housing options. It would go to the trust and would be under their responsibility of how to execute the monies. They have cleared their legal requirements that have been finally put together for having the Affordable Housing Trust to be a, a legal entity and have full authority with that. Some towns have a direct pass through and Wellesley and a few other towns in the area have a direct pass through of CPC monies. Currently, that does not occur where the Affordable Housing Monies would go directly without passing through town meeting. So we still have in our bylaws, it would go to town meeting. And then if it's approved, would go to the Affordable Housing Trust. So that's for $500,000.
I'm going to stop you there because Russ, we see you and I think if you unmute yourself, you might be able to jump in. Your, my colleague and your colleague, Dr. Schubert, just walked us through the first three items. And we can't hear you. But my wifi is staying on. Russ, we can't hear you. Paul, you want to continue?
So yeah, so I'll continue. So the, the, the next one is Historical Preservation Monies from the CPC to the Town Clock, which is in the, it's interesting, it's in the steeple of the Church on the Common. to the Town Clock, which is in the, it's interesting, it's in the steeple of the Church on the Common. And looking back through the the original ownership, in 1865, the town bought a mechanical clock and placed it in the Tower of the Church. So that clock is technically owned by the town of Cohasset. And for many years, there was a keeper of the clock and the keeper of the clock, I believe, a few years ago passed away. And the maintenance of it has not been kept up. So this is 75,000 for a pretty much rebuild of the original portions of the clock using a company out of Maine that does historical clock renovations in town halls and church steeples and on Town Commons. So this is really quite an interesting piece of the town history that if you look at the clock itself, it's, you know, it's from the Civil War era with all of the mechanics from that time period that have been updated only really rarely because they've just kind of fixed it. This would involve a little bit more renovation of the clock and to make it so that would be in the the space that's up there, fit it out for the town clock.
Any questions there? And then I'm going to ask, if we still can't hear Russ, Chris, do you want to walk us through the Town Docs and Parker Ave ramp? Are you prepared to do that?
Yes. By the way, Russ is here. So Russ, I can see Russ.
But we.
Oh no, his microphone's still not working.
Right.
Alright. We can see him though. I can't read his lips though.
No.
So the next two are involved the town harbor. The first ones are the the docks at the Lawrence Wharf, which is the John Smith, you know, right where the is and kind of to the, a little bit right adjacent to all the that's used heavily by the commercial fishing fleet and this would replace the docks down there. And the second is an up to 25% amount for a match for the town to apply for seaport council funds to rebuild the park rap boat rap. The estimate is that will be a seven-digit project and the the goal is to have the seaport council taking the 75% and we'd have to do a 25% match. So that application will go in three weeks. So those are what those two projects are for.
Okay, Russ is back. Russ, can you, can you hear us? Can we hear you?
He has no microphone showing this time.
Okay. Alright. Paul?
Okay, I'll take or show the.
Get your work cut out for you tonight.
Yeah, this was on the fly, so this is using my memory of what I can recall from the meeting through the last Zoom meeting. So the next one up is Open Space and Recreation. It's a CYB SA. And this is American Disabilities Act Improvement to the Fields on North Main Street to the baseball fields. The the concern rose in that, much like the playgrounds on the schools were not ADA compliant, the same thing applies to the ball fields in North Main Street, both the lower fields and the upper field are not ADA compliant. Some of it has to do with the egress and the bathrooms. Some of it has to do with the availability to the ADA bleaches and access to that. Some of it also has to do with the ramps going down to the lower fields. In addition to ADA parking on the field down in the in the lower fields to the right at the end of the parking aspect of the parking area, needs to have ADA compliant parking. So these are all will be state and federally required ADA restrictions or ADA recommendations that will be through the state and federal government that will be adequate. It is 100,000, but these, as we saw with the playgrounds up in the schools, if this is not performed in an ADA requirement, the fields could easily be, they could be stopped from playing on the fields for ADA non-compliance. So this would bring all the fields up to ADA compliance for parking, bathrooms, access for for visitors and for fans.
Any questions? Any any questions thus far? And again, these are, these are projects that have been reviewed by the Community Preservation Committee and have been voted and recommended for us to consider recommending to town meeting.
All of them are unanimous up until now.
Okay, I think the Deer Hills Softball Field Restoration is going to be, we're going to skip over that tonight. There is just a little more due diligence that the CPC Committee is looking to do with that and the CYB SA people. So we're going to jump over that to the land acquisition on 487 King Street.
Okay, so I don't have the map with me, but there's a a piece of property on King Street, which is available for purchase using Open Space and Recreation, which abuts a portion of the town land. It is on King Street beyond where the Lily Pond Dyke is and further down to the right as you head towards Norwell on on Lower King Street. It's a piece of property, I believe it's about two acres. It's kind of a pork chop piece of property in the back, but it abuts portions of the town and does have access from the town where it abuts to the other area that is the old property of Lou Harvey portion that was donated to the town, I believe, one or two years ago. It would not have parking on it, but it would have access to trails and open space through the Lou Harvey portion that would have potentially have parking on North King Street, Lower King Street. And that was 450,000, which was voted unanimously by CPC. Any questions?
And Lee?
Quick question. Is that wetlands or is that dry dry land?
It potentially is a buildable lot, so there is a portion there which is potentially buildable. But some of it is wetland, so it's mixed, some of it's wet and some of it's buildable.
Is that about the reservoir? I mean, the, yeah.
Oh, it does not about the Lily Pond, no, not the reservoir. It's it's offset by a full parcel.
Okay, Fran? Fran, you're on mute. Rob, you want to call your?
Here we go, alright. Been off here for some reason for the last 10 minutes, but I want to go back to the clock for a minute, if you don't mind. That clock was taken down. Noel Ripley was the was the townkeeper of the clock and I was his main assistant. And we took it down probably in 1975 maybe and we sent it over to the vocational school and they completely rebuilt the clock. All new bushings, everything was new and if they put in electric automatic winding system. Now, when Noel died, he tried to hoodwink me into taking care of all of his big old tower clocks and I didn't want to. So his son, Noel Ripley Jr., he became the keeper of the clock. Now, I don't know if anybody's talked to Noel about what's wrong with the clock. I'd like to climb up, but before we spent, you know, $75,000 to fix a clock that was, you know, fairly in fairly recent times drove a haul, we need to find out about that, so. I rigged the clock out of the tower and brought it over to Spotech and then rigged it back up and put it back in place again, got it set up.
Yeah, some of the gearings in it are actually have failed. So it does require a fair amount of work to rebuild some of the the bushings and the gears that are that are not working.
Yeah, well, we might think about bringing it back over to Spotech again before we spend $75,000. That's all I'm saying. Okay, thank you.
Rob, your hands up. I'm sorry if I jumped the gun by calling on your members.
No, no, not at all. And I've sort of limited what I can see. So just a quick question with respect to the the King Street land is, what's the plan for for that land if acquired? Is that going to be put under conservation restrictions and and treated as conservation land or how, what's the plan?
Yeah, the plan that would be open space and for, there's no building on, there's no current building on the property and that would be for open space and non non-building, yeah.
Thank you. And Jean Healy has a hand up.
Yep, go ahead Jean.
Hi, I just had a quick question on the softball field restoration. Could you briefly describe what the issue is and then what the the timing is? Is there going to be like resolution on that particular issue before next week?
So my understanding, and I was just about to respond to a member of the public who had typed in Andy Sims, Nine Hemlock Way. I wish Russ could join us. He knows better than I. I don't believe it's going to impact the timing for the warrant at all. It was just, there was just some outstanding questions that I'm not privy to what exactly they were, that the CPC was going to meet again and just kind of review that with the CYB SA folks and just make sure that their questions were answered. See, Russ is talking. So I don't anticipate it's going to change anything other than, you know, that particular item would would likely need another quick conversation by Advisory and CPC then Advisory then the Select Board. So.
And Diane, can I just briefly, there's a comment from Tom Callahan, it was also on CPC. That parcel of land that is potentially up for acquisition, it is a buildable lot, but it abuts Conservation Trust property with existing trust in town properties. So it kind of shoehorns in through a couple of ways of abutting. And there are some trails already extant on that land and that potentially would be accessible.
Thank you. Just, I said this at the beginning of the meeting, but if there's a member of the public that wants to make a comment, just please type in your name and address and we'll promote you to ask your question. It's just going to be easier than us going back and forth and trying to manage conversation, which is not the intent of the the Q and A feature. Thanks. Fran? Fran, you're on mute. And Helene is joining us.
Is that piece of land abut where Peppermint Brook runs into Lily Pond? Is that the piece of land we're talking about?
I don't think Peppermint Brook runs through it, but it probably has some of the watershed effect towards Peppermint Brook.
I'm just trying to trying to place just exactly where it is. I think that must be what they're talking about.
It's, yeah, it's, it's, let's see, if I had the map, if you look at where the where the dam is, proceed down towards Norwell on on King Street. It's on the right-hand side, the next.
On King Street, up Beachwood Street.
King Street. So it's, it's, it's to the right, it's deep to where the Lou Harvey piece of property is. If you go down Lou, the Lou Harvey property, you take a left as you enter all the way down the property, that's where it abuts. So it's, it's deep to pretty much the road by about maybe, I would say probably 500 yards, maybe 400 yards.
Alright, so that's, that's heading towards where the the outfall Lily Pond into the Aaron River then, I guess that would.
That's correct.
Okay, I got you. Alright, fine.
Diane, I'm not sure what's next.
I don't know what that is. I think you're up to the Sawyer Street Basketball Court.
Beachwood Basketball Court. So this is Open Space and Recreation source of funding. It's the Beachwood Basketball Court. It would involve fencing, it would involve repaving of the basketball court and also removal of some trees. What has happened over the past several years is that the the basketball court was put in almost ad hoc a few years back, maybe 12 years ago. You see, I saw a few roots have pushed up on the on the basketball court and have kind of broken through. The trees will be removed, it will be repaved, smoothed out and painted. And there will be further fencing on the side where it abuts the baseball field. And that's 58,000.
Lee?
Oh, I think I remove all the asphalt and dig down there and put a base in there. How could it come through?
They'll see what they have to do. I think they're going to have to dig down at least to get some of the roots out. So they'll probably have to go down a fair amount to to put a base in so that it will be firm and and last.
I hope we have inspection on this. Geez.
All good jobs, right? Right. Milliken Field?
The Sawyer Street Basketball Court. This is the the final remaining portion of the basketball court. It would involve putting up the baskets, painting and lining. And I believe they're putting up a netting in between the two basketball courts to separate play. And probably they'll put up a netting on the far end to keep it from going over the the fence to the train. And that's 13,200 from Open Space and Recreation funds. Any questions?
Lee?
The fencing's already been bid out, hasn't it? The fencing?
Yeah.
It's been sitting for four or five months. I don't know what's going on. Okay.
Well, just, this is the the final, the final payment, the final amount to finish off the courts.
Okay, two more.
The Milliken Field, I'm trying to remember this one. This was late in the, late in the night.
Was this to finish the work at the snack shed?
Oh, so the.
We can hold off on that.
Yeah, I'm not sure the details.
That's okay.
I believe it was the, it was the on the side of the baseball field up in Milliken Field, I believe it was the to the either side of the of the base, of the base paths and some fencing, but I'm not certain on that.
Paul, this was a part of bathrooms and ADA compliance up there? Remember you guys talked about that?
That was at the baseball fields on North Main Street. Lee, no?
Okay, I thought there was something up that way too. Alright.
It could be, maybe it's the, it could be the the housing up there that that could be, I'm, again, I don't recall all the details on that, so I'm not
Okay.
I'm not keen on giving the full details on that.
So so the good news is where, you know, a lot of this is, we still have a number of weeks to vote on all of this. So any of the details that we don't get out tonight, you know, Advisory can kind of punch through everything and the ones that you don't have enough information on, you know, we can, we can delay that another for for next week. And then last is the second congregation.
Congregation. So so all these up until now, we're all unanimous. The the final is Open Space and Recreation source of funding. The second congregation preservation of the facade and bell tower, which which would include fixing probably the the windows, the the front portion that faces the commons. The the three items that are necessary for this to be approved, being a church and having private funds to be allowed for a church, three things have to be accomplished. One is.
Sorry, it's a microphone.
Ross, I think we heard you.
Ah, then I better stop saying words you don't hear in the Bible.
There you go, Russ. You're exposed. So for, Russ, if I could just ask you to hold off, let Paul finish his.
Paul's doing a great job.
Okay, and then we'll get, we have, we have a question from one of the members, but.
Yeah. So the the three things from a legal point of view, from the CPC funding for churches, there's three necessary hurdles that need to be achieved. One is it needs to be an historic building that is adequately verifiable as a historic building, which it is, it's on the National Registry of Historic Buildings. It also needs to be on an historic location. And the Town Commons does qualify as abutting and historic location. So those two are clear. The third is that the monies that are requested and authorized needs to be used for non religious services or religious use. There needs to be the the confirmation and the assurance that monies that will be given to a church will not be used to assist in religious services or religious items. The the vote here, I believe, was five to three. And the five were in favor, three were were not. And the question came up whether this is church and state. And whether the use of the monies can be assured to be only used for non religious authorization and use. And then those are, I think that's it.
Yeah.
I swear I blink and I go on mute. I I want to try to manage this as best and give Russ a platform in a minute. But Mary McGoldrick from advisory had her hand up, so I'll ask her to ask her question. Russ, I'm then going to ask you to summarize, then I'm going to ask questions from select board members and advisory. And then if there is any lingering questions from the public. So Mary, you're first.
Yes, so these total a little over $2 million. What does that leave in the account? And what is the percentage that CPC is being funded now by the state? Do we know those answers?
Oh, thank, Russ is here to hopefully answer those.
The state match is estimated around 30%. The surcharge for this year was 531,000. The state match is estimated 150,000, which doing mental math real quick is about a 30% return on the money. And I'm sorry, Mary, what's your other, oh, what does it leave? In unreserved funds, this is going to be available after the new fiscal year. Our unreserved is 300, I'm sorry, 3,237,374. It obviously hit hard on our historical account, which is 115,509. Our open space is 189.8, which doesn't obviously affect this, nor does the community housing, which is 68.1. Total we're sitting on right now about 3,600,000. Tonight's money comes to about $2 million, which leaves us about 1,606,000. We can hit the unreserved funds to make up any shortcoming. It's been years since we did not exceed both our historical or open space or community housing fund. So we've been relying heavily on the unreserved.
Thank you.
Any other questions on any of the line items other than softball, which Russ, I just want you, because there are members of the public that just want to understand that that's not getting completely wiped out and that there's still time for this for the warrant. But Fran first and then Helene.
Yeah, just back to the clock. I'd like to, I'd like to know who surveyed the clock to determine that it needs to be overhauled. And can we talk to the Socia Botec who did a really splendid job with the with the students over there in the machine shop overhauling it the last time? The, I'd like to speak, go ahead.
The company was, and I don't have their name right in front of me, Chris may recall it. It's company up in Maine. They are the only tower clock manufacturers in the country. I talked with the man for quite a while. This is a Howard clock.
Howard clock, right?
Howard was very famous for his staple clocks, among other clocks. The gentleman I spoke to in Maine thinks this is one of the first of 10 clocks that Howard made. It's an extremely valuable piece of machinery. It probably is worth, I said to him, I think it's probably worth 350 to 400,000. And he didn't throw up a counter offer or anything. So I assume he thinks it's that or more. They may have maintained it, but they did not do it properly. The gears have been eaten, the 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 clock's overpowered. The hands are too big and they're, I don't mean in dimensions, too big in weight. And what has happened is, if you can visualize this, as you go between the hour and the half hour, the weight of the clock is pushing up on the gear inside. And that slowly wears that out. When it goes to the half hour to the hour, it eats up the other side of the gear next to it. So eventually the gears almost become shaped like a spade in playing cards. And that's what's happened to those. The escape is missing. And the escape is well, it's the heart of the clock.
That's what makes it tick.
Oh, yeah. Well, and it makes it talk as well, but it's long gone. And nobody seems to know where it is. They think it may be up there behind something of a wall. It had not been oiled properly. There was a lot of if that clock hadn't been built as well as it was back in the 1800s, it wouldn't be running at all.
Helene, your question?
Hi, my question is for Russ. What are the precedents in the past about, you know, when we were dealing with the Unitarian Church repair? How is this different or alike that in terms of the Second Congo?
Well, this clock is owned by the town. Which was not unusual. I mean, I don't need to tell anybody on in this meeting, but that was the original meeting house in town. And.
Talking about the church, I I mean, the town hall, I'm talking about the Second Congregational request for the facade, that project. How is that, you know, you know, we already been through the Unitarian Church? That was, you're saying the Unitarian Church repair was that clock was repaired? Is that correct? The steeple was repaired? I thought preservation money went to that repair.
The steeple was repaired, but not by preservation money. The clock face was repaired.
Oh, okay.
And they they put plexiglass numbers on the dial. And I think they did something with the with the arms. But the clock is so overpowered right now that it's it's basically, well, as he put it, your clock is eating itself at the moment.
Right. But there's precedence in our town for church facades to be fixed by the town with town money. Is that correct?
With CPC money.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, CPC.
Yes, we did work, we can do work on the exterior. And I'll send you a copy of Paul Drenzis's legal opinion if you'd like.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
He, he pointed out that it is historic building, which is allowable under the CPA. It has unquestionable historic nature in that it's on a historic registry. It's in a historic district. As far as contributing to the community, there's no question of the value that Second Congregation adds to us. There had been other, there've been almost 60 CPA or CPCs that have done work on church, churches since the Acton. You know, it's, it's hard, I mean, almost proving a negative to say that the money's not going to towards helping the church out. It's being directed strictly to to the facade of the building. There's no work on an altar. It is very similar when we got the first parish request. My concern was, is this violating the First Amendment?
Right.
But we're not, in the same case, we're not dealing with anything that shows any religious iconographic features. There has been one CPC that did do one like that, but it was to restore Lewis Comfort Tiffany windows in a church in Nantucket. While they showed the, I think it was the crucifixion, just the overwhelming historic nature of a Tiffany window was enough to make everybody go with it. There have been a lot of cases that have been or proposals that have been granted. There have been no more lawsuits. Some people on the board expressed, well, that's because, or you that, you know, there haven't been any yet. Sometimes lawsuits are brought because or aren't brought because people realize they don't have a case. And they're not going to spend the money to find out on it, which is the way I look at it, to be honest with you. It's a historic piece of the town. It's an historic district of the town. And in it's not only, not in exchange, but because of the overall benefit to the town that that church exhibits, I feel personally that it's is worthy of giving a grant to it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yep. All right. Any other comments from select board members or advisory? Just two things that I just got a message from Jack, sorry.
Yes, just a disclosure on this, that I'm a member of Second Congregational Church. And although I support all of the things on there, if there's a mechanism where I can recuse myself for the one for Second Congregational, but that's, I think I need to disclose I'm a member of that church.
Thanks, Jack. And actually, we're not going to vote on any of this tonight until advisories had a chance to have their internal conversation and make a recommendation to us. But just two clarifications and Russ, I'm glad you're here. On the on the track, my, I just want clarification that that's a like a full redo of the track that surrounds the turf.
Correct.
As opposed to like just a covering.
Yeah.
And then the with respect to the Deer Hill softball field, that just needs official sign off from the school committee, which we anticipate will happen this week. And then CPC will just anoint it, you know, assuming all the questions have been answered, back to advisory and select board at a future meeting.
I am going to schedule a meeting for next Monday to go over that. There was a presentation that's being made to the school committee that I was given a copy of. And it raised some questions with me to where I wanted to have the board look at it again, because there were some changes that might affect how some people look at that one. But yeah.
So I just want to assure, because I know there's members of the public that are just wondering about the timing. And we still have a number of weeks to get all of this finished and recommended.
Yeah, theoretically, we had called opposed to accepting applications. And I say theoretically, because as you all know, Diane, it wouldn't be the first time I've told the Board of Selectmen that I was ready to go lying through my teeth and drawing stuff in at the last minute. So I'm I'm glad to to hear something again on Deer Hill if people want to weigh in on it. But to bring in new ones at this time, I mean, I suppose.
No, 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 I'm sorry. That's not what I meant to say. I'm sorry. I'm just suggesting that 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 which we've already evaluated that are that are in line that are that you wanted to revisit next week are not going to be out of the queue.
No. No, I'm still here.
Great.
But it would be.
We're not accepting any new anything for town meeting.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I mean, I'll be glad to hear the Deer Hill. You know, we heard them. I saw this proposal. There were a few changes in that that gave me pause to think, but I'd also like to have the rest of the committee weigh in on it. Which way it goes, honestly, I really don't care, but I want everybody to be well informed of anything that has changed on it. And that's going to be dependent on what we hear from what the school committee gets presented on, I believe it's Thursday night.
Okay, great. I just want to check and make sure if there's a member of the public that would like to be promoted for a question for advisory or the select board, if you could just type your name and address in. And then we'll start getting ourselves, Russ, thank you. I'm sorry about all the technological glitches.
Oh, it's okay. I mean, honestly, I would have preferred to have just the audio rather than the video, but you know.
That's great.
I'll leave that one right alone, Russ.
You know, that'd be the first unanimous vote I get from you in a while.
Well, what what the video allowed us to do was see that you were desperately trying to get on the meeting. So we appreciate.
And you know, it's a good thing the audio wasn't on because, as Paul Simon said in that one song of his, you heard words you never heard in the Bible. You didn't since I was muted. I don't know, did the Barnes Field? There is a grant for $100,000 to the Barnes Field that wasn't on the list that I gave to Tracy earlier, which is bringing the property within ADA compliance.
Yeah, Paul walked us through that.
Okay, I was talking about, yep.
All right. Thank you so much.
All right, we are good. Thank you all very much. We're going to move on to the capital budget, capital improvement budget. So Sam Wakeman, I'm going to have you reveal yourself. And wow, what an impressive list we're going to be looking at.
I am here.
Okay.
And I had sent you all a copy of the capital budget recommendations for town meeting. And I can put those up if you want, I think. If that's helpful to you, but you all should have a copy of it.
I think for the public would like to, we would like to put it up. Yep. If you can easily share it, otherwise like, yep.
Chris, I don't have the share on my screen, so.
All right. I think Tracy has it too, but hold on one second.
Paul Schubert, you have your hand up.
Yeah, the 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 files that came over to my email, I could not open them up with the requests. It was all blank. It was a.
Hi, is Russ, is Russ still pretty with his computer or can I talk to him?
Okay, Sam. Yep. So we we have the capital budget recommendations in front of us on the screen. I hope people at home can see it. Sam, you have the floor.
Okay. I can go through these one at a time. There are several of them that are supplements to CPC where they provided some of the money and we provide some of the money. But the these for various departments, the requests are in their priority order. So we're trying to follow what they want first where we can. The schools, 90,000 for the bus lease, 52,000 for continuation of Chromebook leases, 250,000 for the Deer Hill School air handler, 75,000 for Osgood sprinkler heads, 500,000 for Cohasset Cohasset Middle High School HVAC, 50,000 for the workshop collection, 40,000 for door fob. forty-thousand for door fobs, a hundred-and-twenty-thousand for the plumbing at the middle high school science lab, thirty-two-thousand for pilot technology, a hundred-and-twenty-thousand additional to CPCs for the track replacement, uh, five-hundred-thousand for the turf replacement. Then we go to facilities where we're providing fifty-nine-thousand for a new pickup truck, plow, truck, et cetera. DPW, three-hundred-thousand for twenty-year road replacement. Bucket truck for DPW for ninety-five-thousand. A chipper for thirty-eight-thousand-six-hundred. Forty-eight-thousand-three-oh-five for a slope mower. Seventeen-thousand-four-eighty-four for two stand-up mowers. Four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand for the replacement of the salt shed. The police department, it's a hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-five-hundred for two new, um, patrol car SUVs according to their vehicle replacement schedule. Um, we have twenty-five-thousand for repairs on engine two, which will increase its useful life substantially. Seventeen-thousand for rescue jack equipment and forty-four-thousand-five-seventy-five for a command hybrid vehicle. And the recreation amounts are supplements to those CPC has done. Sawyer Street Courts thirteen-thousand, Millikan concession thirty-thousand and the Beechwood Courts twelve-thousand. And that is our recommendation for this year's annual town meeting. And I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Great. Great. Thank you so much, Sam. I'll ask anybody on advisory or select board members that have a question. Paul, then Corey, then Lee.
So the SUVs for the police, I know they, they're getting a command, um, hybrid vehicle. Are they looking at potential hybrids for the SUVs or electric vehicles from?
Well, they, they started to look at it, but they're not quite ready for them yet. Probably the next cycle, the hybrid may come into play.
Thanks.
Corey?
Uh, for the, for the Chromebook lease program, is that ca- continuation, continuation of existing program or is that a new program?
Whi- which one, Corey?
The Chromebook lease program for the schools.
It's a continuation of the existing program.
Okay, thank you.
Leland.
Yeah, Sam, quick question on the police cars. What's going to happen to the two that replace? Are they going to keep them or trade them?
Well, they're going to replace some other vehicles that the police are using, which are getting towards the end of their useful life and those will be traded in to get whatever we can get out of them. In other words, it sort of rolls downhill, Lee, if that makes sense to you.
Yeah, so in some cases they, uh, wow, sorry. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Gene Estino?
Thank you. Um, can you tell me what the remainder is for the bus lease? I know that they're more than ninety thousand.
Oh boy, Gene. I think it might be an additional thirty thousand, but I'd have to look that up. I'm just not sure.
That sounds right. I'm just curious where the rest of the money is coming from. That's all.
Well, I assume from the schools.
Right. Well, and we'll find that out when we talk to them. I just didn't know if you maybe had the answer. Thank you.
I should, but I don't.
That's okay.
If it's not yours to worry about, right?
That's right.
Lee?
Yeah, Sam, on the buses again, uh, how many buses do they have? As the school population is going down, how many buses are actually active? If one backup and how many buses are rolling?
I think seven, Lee, but here again, I'm not positive.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Um, Sam, it's, um, a great job. First of all, um, the, the unanimous votes, I think, um, are a sign of very strong deliberation because I know things just don't pass, um, through capital budgets. Yes, column without some really long-term due diligence and with a, with a look back and look forward to, um, all the other needs of the town. So thank you for the hard work. I do want to know, um, why there was a dissension on the vote for the chipper.
Well, because we're buying a brand new chipper. We already have a chipper, uh, which is breaking down all the time. And one of our members felt that we should dispose of the old chipper and getting the new one. But DPW felt they wanted to hold on to it for, quote, big emergencies, end quote.
Okay.
And again, just to let you know, we're recommending all of these as cash purchases, no bonding.
Terrific. Great. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? If there's a member of the public who would like to ask a question, you can type your name and address and we'll promote you. I'll stall for ten seconds or fifteen seconds to let that happen. Otherwise, Rob, your crowd is good.
I, uh, well, yes, we, we always are, but, um, yeah, absent, absent additional questions, um, I think we can adjourn our joint meeting and then all of us will scramble for the link and reconvene in our posted, uh, separate meeting. Mary?
Yeah. So Justine just sent the second link actually. So that should have popped up in everyone's, um, calendar for us for advisory. But I, I would just ask that we could get those two files. I don't know if you already had them, Rob, um, that were displayed on the screen. So we had something to work from, from our deliberations.
Yes, I, I, I saw those. I had got them as well.
Okay.
They're, they're the two spreadsheets with all the expenditure items on it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Correct.
And do you also, Rob, do you also have the document from town council relating to the, um, okay, the funding for the church? Yeah.
I've seen it. It was, uh, in, I guess there's a thing called OneDrive on which documents magically appear. And, uh, I found it. I found it. I read it. And, uh, it was there. Whether I could find it again is an open question, but yeah, no, I've, I've seen, I've seen that opinion and I'm familiar with the issues.
Boy, are we all eager to be in person with like paper that we can touch. I never thought I'd say that.
I see Lee's hand.
Yep.
Uh, do we have anything to?
I just thought something, Sam, on the bucket truck. Are, are people going to be trained on that? I'm very concerned about, we had a bucket truck before because it did the, all the, uh, pull stations for the fire department. And then it wasn't serviced, wasn't taken care of. Are we going to have enough people in a, in a place to store it? Where's it going to be stored?
At DPW.
Outside. Yep.
Maybe. I don't know that for sure. Could be stored inside.
Probably don't want to store it in the new salt shack though.
I know. I don't think we, well, we don't really have a salt shed to store it in right now. It's falling.
Um, so Rob, I, I think if you want to call your meeting to a close.
I think we should do that and I think we have to do it by roll call. So, uh, very quickly, can I have a motion to adjourn this portion of our meeting?
To move.
Uh, everybody, I saw Lee's hand first, a second.
Second.
Uh, Gene, um, all in favor, uh, of, of adjournment, uh, Gene Estino?
Aye.
Fran Collins?
Aye.
Uh, Gene Healy?
Aye.
Lee Jenkins?
Aye.
Colleen Leeb?
Aye.
Mary McGoldrick?
Aye.
Meg Wheeler?
Aye.
I think we're going to get Fran's signal flags to, and it'll save us all.
Why it keeps going to mute? I have no idea.
And, uh, Rob Hillman is an eye. So we are going to leave the meeting. I'll see the advisory committee somewhere else in cyberspace, uh, in a few minutes. Thanks.
Thank you all for your hard work.
And thanks for your hospitality. Thanks.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Sam can stay if he wants. Well, um, breaking news, I lost my internet signal, um, there for a while, so I'm holding in now that it could possibly be my computer. Anyway, thank you all for your diligence tonight. Uh, Chris, who, I, I didn't know whether there was other articles that we were supposed to be reviewing with, um, capital budget.
Um, no, not, not tonight.
Okay.
The, um, advisory takes up the water and sewer for final review Thursday, a few other articles finally. It's probably as easy to have, take them as a block next week.
Okay. Okay.
I will tell you that the, 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 the fear that we had an extra unpaid bill is gone. Thank God. It turned out it was a mistake. So.
Okay.
One thing fixed.
So are there things that we can do by either placing articles on a warrant and/or making recommendations? Because we have the recommendations from advisory.
Yeah, I think, I think next Tuesday will be a busy night for that. Uh, I mean, apart from the school budget. So I think the advisory will wrap up a bunch of stuff on Thursday. So next Tuesday, my recommendations, my plan is start a little earlier uh, in the regular session. We can kind of get some of that routine stuff out of the way. Uh, in addition, next week will also be, uh, Earth Day update from Peter Prescettori of his committee. And also a proclamation for Arbor, this will be the town's first year. Uh, and, um, I did want to bounce, if you're ready to go, Tim has your update because you're back on clock. Does anyone have a warrant? I'm happy to answer.
Hey, everybody okay on the warrant? Great. Thank you.
Uh, so, so just to quickly, uh, for scheduling purposes, uh, we're kind of looking at doing an electric car, so to speak. That's not a parade because parades aren't legal right now, but a electric car, electric car caravan. You know, everyone in their own, uh, electric vehicles, um, we're looking about trying to do logistics of that.
Gene, wrong meeting.
Next year.
Um, the, um, they come and go, um, he, uh, at noon on Sunday, the 25th, that's the plan. And perhaps do a little, uh, very safely distanced, uh, char- small caravan of cars. We're trying to figure out the route. Uh, it would either begin or it would, the, the base ends would be the, either the school, it would either begin or end at the school or the library and then pass through the central parking lot, uh, in, in the village. And then the opportunity to dedicate each of the sites, um, that we.
Are you talking a caravan of electric cars?
Yes, electric. Just, just, just on, we have some town. If any of you want to, are free, we have the town electric vehicles here. So you can take one of the leaves if you don't have one. You can, you ask, say, it's only like a mile. So, uh, you could drive that safely. So, we have three leaves. Well, actually we have two back here. Elder Affairs keeps one regularly. So, um, we have a little leaf, uh, an all electric leaf here in the parking lot, if anybody wants to try that one. So, uh, but I'll have more information for you. And the other date, if, if, if it works for, uh, any group of you on the 30th, it's a Friday. We're trying to do the tree planting at 10. We actually do have elm trees. It turns out. We have a safe, we have new, the new hybrid safe elm trees. Uh, so we're, we're looking at some patients. I'm going to look with Mark, uh, I'm sorry, with Brian tomorrow, uh, at a couple of sites that we might consider doing the planting. So, um, with our town harvest. And so I did want to share one little quick photo with you. This is from last week. A little blurry, but if you can see that is Mark Kelly, Tom, right, and the son of Mark retired last week after thirty-four years with the town. Uh, had a little sign up on the front of town hall and we had a safe socially distant gathering in the parking lot for him. Uh, and we had a little food truck. So, um, in about, uh, you know, a lot of people have worked with him over the years. That's his whole, that's his facility scene with him right there.
That's terrific. Thirty-four years?
Thirty-four years.
So he started when he was twelve, you know?
When he was twelve. Uh, but so he, so those thirty-four years, he did work for the water department, which went privatized for a while. So he had a gap in service, uh, but he's been with the town, uh, for actually even longer than thirty-four years technically.
Wow.
Stretch. Um, so he's, uh, he was very, he was very gr- great, great, very grateful and we'll recognize him and Bob, uh, he getting retired back in December with all the employees' service recognition, uh, in November, as we historically have done last year. You and Diane, Diane, you and I actually read through them, uh, virtually. Uh, hopefully next year we can do it in person again. This year we'll be able to do it in person again. I want to let all of you know that the fire department has just won a grant, uh, for a little less than ten thousand dollars for mask testing, mask testing equipment for self-contained breathing apparatus. It's a grant from the state. And the police just want a, a, a grant that will help them do education for a distracted driving, which is as dangerous as drunk and driving because, you know, you're on your phone, you're doing whatever. So they're going to be doing public education on distracted driving. I don't, I don't have a dollar figure. I think it just pays for educational materials and process. So, um, that's one of the grant updates. I think there's a couple of others that are percolating. I should have good news in a week or two, uh, on another grant or two, which is exciting. Uh, and then, uh, we're in process for ten meetings. So, um, it's all systems go every night.
Yep. Um, Corey, your hand?
Yeah, uh, just the, uh, your distracted driving thing just flagged in my head. During the, uh, speed limit discussions, we talked a little bit about kind of, uh, you know, downtown traffic control, safety. Uh, any updates on, on that work?
Yes. So I was actually talking to you quickly today about that. So those conversations are ongoing and, uh, hoping to circle back to the board as you wrap up town meeting with some signage and some thoughts. The, uh, the side, the, the, the border posting signage is kind of standardized. That's actually in production, but we'll be circling back again. Perhaps at the next meeting, uh, not the next meeting, the meeting after the next meeting, uh, the twentieth or twenty-seventh, whichever date you end up meeting, uh, the end of it. And that's, um, that's, I mean, there's other things I got to touch on, but I think that's, that's enough.
Okay. Thanks, Chris. Um, so we will go to select board comments. Uh, Jack, you want to go first?
Yeah. Hi. You know, uh, this, the, uh, conversation we had about the, uh, events planned for the comment. There's something that I think that we really should be saying, and, and I think every member of the select board should be saying it. You know, when I meet our fellow townspeople, I find very good, decent people. And I don't see people consumed by hate. And I think that we should have a recognition of the fundamental decency of, of the Cohasset citizens. Um, I haven't seen, um, in, in people of different beliefs, and we all are of different beliefs in this town. And I just haven't seen that. And I think we ought to salute the innate goodness and the way in which the people in Cohasset are raising their children, are interacting. Of course, for political, so we're all, it's a blood, blood battle in politics, we know. But I just think each member of the select board really needs to reach out and appreciate and say thank you to our citizens because they are very good and decent people. Thank you.
Wouldn't agree with you more. Corey?
Yeah, um, yeah, I was thinking about a lot of things today, but, uh, I just want to share with everybody and especially by my colleagues here. I'm excited for the stuff that we've got coming up. Uh, you know, today, the stuff, uh, you know, with Kerry's working on with diversity, uh, what alternative energy is working on, what the economic task force is working on, the, the safe harbors we're working on. I mean, there's just so many things going on right now. And, uh, COVID was really hard and it kind of threw a gear, but we've figured out how to get these wheels moving. And I think the next six months, I'm just really excited. We're going to see a lot of these efforts come to fruition and I'm looking forward to it. So, uh, just, I had a moment of little clarity today and just, you know, uh, nice work, everyone. Uh, thank you for everyone that, that's on committees and stuff like that. Um, and I'm really excited for, for the next couple of months because I think we're going to see a lot of just great things, uh, kind of finally wrap up. Thanks everyone.
Absolutely. Uh, Paul?
So the, uh, you know, the eternal chemicals came up, I think, in, with our last meeting with the polyfluorinated, uh, compounds. So the, uh, the, the EPA as well as at the state level, they're looking at, uh, ways to mitigate, uh, removal from various water supplies. So that's ongoing more, both at the state and the EPA level, um, as of now. So I think that's going to be, uh, a, a big deal. Uh, once we get some help from the state, if we do need it, um, I think they're working on it. So that's a, a good sign. The other thing, I, again, I'm going through this pandemic thing and, uh, the, the good is, is all of these vaccines are starting really to, um, get produced in large volume and we're getting a, a large number of, citizens in the, in the Commonwealth getting vaccinated. We're close to forty percent four zero, which is remarkable. If you can get a, a dose, get it, it's going to be opened up as we go on to just about everyone in a few weeks. So we can get enough people vaccinated by the summer, you know, we'll have an awful lot easier time, uh, both in the hospital and in, in the backyard and at the. and at the ball fields and all the other places we really can enjoy hanging out with. That's it.
Thank you. Carrie?
Yeah, this week was the, the anniversary of the assassination of Martin Luther King. And after this conversation tonight, I keep thinking about his quotation saying that the arc of the moral universe is long, but it bends towards justice. And I will end with that.
That traps me. It's very hard to say anything. I, I think everybody has been very eloquent, especially at this point in the evening about all the great things that are happening. And we really are blessed with good people in this community who work really, really hard. So thank you all very much. Thanks to the staff who's been shouldering a lot of these projects, you know, over the last difficult 13 months. So like Cory, I'm excited to, we've, we've accomplished a lot and we have a lot more to accomplish. So with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
There a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Jack, great. No.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night, everybody. Thanks.
Good night.